Being of course in person, I call this meeting to order. Just take your seats please. Take your seats please. All rise for the -- take your seats, all rise. Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Galantino?
Here.
Margaret Hoover-Malti? Commissioner Tohvee? Rich Patterson?
Here.
Mike Cristaldi?
Here.
Ned Humphries?
Here.
Craig Mama Sanna?
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with due public notice thereof and pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notice of this meeting was advertised in the press and a copy of same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that should you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the board administrator to sign the two information sheets. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I would like a motion for approval of resolutions and decisions, number nine, 2013, Stephen Greenberg; number ten, 2013, Sidney Geller.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Our attorney and chairman will be recusing himself from this first case. And Mr. Collins and Mr. Galantino are -- Mr. Collins and Mr. Galantino are recused due to their status.
We're doing the Patterson case.
Okay, am I doing anything?
First cases, Richard and Judy Patterson, 213 North Lancaster Avenue, block 413.02, lot 5.01, in the S-25 district, to grant a minor subdivision with variance for pool. Taxes are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied.
Roger Rubin?
I do. The subject property is a single-family house and in-ground swimming pool on a lot of 80 feet by 87.7 feet totaling 7,016 square feet. The house was badly damaged by Hurricane Sandy and will need to be demolished. The applicants wish to divide the lot into two, each being 40 feet wide by 87.7 feet deep and 3,508 square feet. They will rebuild their house on the new lot 5.03 and intend to submit plans conforming to S-25 standards in all particulars. The subdivision, if approved, would leave the swimming pool on proposed lot 5.02 as an accessory use on a lot without a principal use, hence the need for planning board action. The action required is a D variance or Use Variance for the pool as an accessory use located on a lot without a principal use per the ordinance and state law. Comments? The two lots being created would each meet and/or exceed the minimums of S-25, 40 feet width and 2,500 square feet area. Both lots are 3,508 square feet in area. Two, but for the pool issue, this would be a by right subdivision and would go to the committee rather than the planning board. Three, the house being demolished was actually a legal duplex being replaced by a single-family house. Thus, two units now will end up as two houses in the future. There are no variances required by the subdivision on either lot. Four, approval shall be conditioned on city engineer requirements, demolition of the house prior to recordation, or such other specified time that might be helpful to the applicant in terms of insurance and FEMA matters, and erection of a complete fence surround for the pool, which the house demolition will require. Five, if either lot is sold separately as agreed to by the applicant, the pool must be removed prior to issuance of land use compliance or CO approval. And there is attached a letter by the city engineer, which I have referred to and which is incorporated in the conditions.
Applicant. Applicant?
Richard Patterson, 213 North Lancaster Avenue.
I do. I have nothing to add other than what Roger said. We have a duplex there now, there'll be a single-family home when we're done, and I'm sure at some time in the future there'll be two houses, but there'll be no more increase in density in the neighborhood.
Tell her they haven't decided yet.
My wife making sure that I say. It's all right, just if anyone has any questions.
Mr. Patterson, you agree that should the pool lot be sold or conveyed, that the pool will be demolished prior to that?
Yes.
How long has the pool been there?
Thousand and eight.
For five years the neighborhood's used to it in terms of the particular suitability? There's no other change going to take place other than the smashing every line going between the house and the pool?
Yes.
Chris, you push the button.
Roger did mention that there may be some issues with respect to your ability to record the plan within 190 days because of some FEMA issues that may arise preventing you from demolishing the house. Quickly, it's in the report.
Is there a problem? What's your situation?
I don't think so.
That's all I'm suggesting, is if you would like to ask the board for an additional 190 days now, rather than--
That was my next request.
Rather than have to come back, should you not be able to get the house demolished, I think the board can act on that this evening. Which would give you whatever 190 plus 190 is to have the map recorded.
I don't have a home, I'm trying to get back in as soon as I can, but if it takes that long, fine, I would like to request that from the board.
That's all I have. This is a D variance. I see that Mr. Galantino and Mr. Collins have recused themselves, the records should reflect that. Otherwise, it's a five-vote variance. And I think we have enough members, we have six members, Mr. Patterson. In the event you do not get five votes, would you request that the absent members this evening read the transcript next month and vote on it?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all that I have.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Okay, anybody from the public like to speak? Public closed. Okay, public portion is closed. Roll call.
Adios, San Torre.
I vote to approve the application. I don't think this is any situation where we have to worry about the swimming pool being used as a commercial property or anything on a separate lot. Everything else being as it is, the subdivision is well-founded and the questions to the answers of Mr. -- the answers to the questions of Mr. Ballenson were good. I approve.
Glenn Wazlowski?
I vote for the motion, I don't see any issues or any negative aspects.
Craig Mama Sanna?
I also vote for the issue. I can't wait for it to happen for you, Rich. The faster the better.
Mike Cristaldi?
I vote yes, I think it's going to have no negative impact at all anywhere. It'll be an improvement.
Ned Humphries?
I vote the affirmative, I don't think there's any problem.
And Mike Rich?
I vote yes, the pool's existing, there wasn't any problems with the neighbors coming forward, so I'm going to approve it.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Good luck.
Five, six to none.
Chris, thanks.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Next case is C Square LLC, Margate Dairy Bar, 9510 Ventnor Avenue, block 129, lot 45, in the C2 district, to grant a site plan, D variance for expansion of non-conforming use, and a C variance for parking, building coverage, setbacks, and possibly others. Taxes are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. As in the prior case, Mr. Galantino and Collins have recused themselves for the D variance.
Roger Rubin? Roger Rubin?
I do. The subject property, as described in the technical business plan submitted with the application, is quote "an iconic South Jersey shore brand," which has been a destination location for families from generation to generation. It is the Margate Dairy Bar and the attached associated restaurant located at Ventnor and Madison Avenues on a lot of 50 by 90, 4,500 square feet. The property was severely damaged by Hurricane Sandy on October 29 and presently stands as a vacant gutted building. The history of the property is set forth in the business plan covering a 61-year span since 1952, more than half of Margate's existence as a municipality. For the most part, the Dairy Bar has been exactly what it is now, a through-the-window experience purveying ice cream and associated foods on a limited menu basis accompanied by a sometimes long sociable wait in line on a hot summer night. Lately, the owner, Mr. Clayton, has added street-side entertainment such as jazz music, a magician, and other amusements. The restaurant next door has by and large over the past couple of decades been a separate sit-down restaurant of varying types, including Santone's, Barbecue Ranch, Dune, and a Colombian restaurant called Mango's. Mr. Clayton proposes herein to integrate both parts of the building into a fully renovated, flood-remediated entity, which will be a dairy bar and burger bar to include additional serving windows, indoor seating, ADA bathrooms, a Burger Shake Shack-type menu, retro-style finishes, jukeboxes, and other nostalgic touches. Per the plan submitted by Stokes Architecture, the separate elements of the building will be united. You can buy ice cream and other foods at the outside windows and use the sidewalk picnic tables, or you can go inside and order burgers, shakes, and other menu items and sit inside or a combination. To accomplish this program, the present building is proposed herein to be expanded as follows: filling in a niche on Ventnor Avenue, eight feet by five and a half feet for an additional takeout window; an L-shaped rear addition at the first floor level for storage and trash; and the removal of a shed on the property line; a second-story addition in the rear for an office and storage; and a new elevated angled roof structure in the Duop 1950s style above the burger side of the building, the left side looking at it from Ventnor Avenue. This new roof will rise from the existing roof, which is 11 feet 8 and 1/2 inches above grade to the top of the parapet, 17 feet 11 inches at the highest point, closest to the condos to the left from Ventnor Avenue. This sloping roof is about 14 feet 10 inches above grade, a three-foot difference. The actions required are a D variance for enlargement of a non-conforming use in the C2 district, site plan for the expansion of the building footprint, C variance is for front setback, 10 feet required versus 5.2 feet to the small Ventnor Avenue addition, side setback on the east side or the Atlantic City side, five feet required versus 3.1 feet to the rear addition, and about zero feet to the roof buildup, combined side setbacks, 12 and 1/2 feet required versus 8.3 feet first floor and 5.2 feet second floor. Comments and conditions? Evidence submitted by the applicant and my own research into the previous approvals indicate that the total seating is less than previously was the case, and there is no parking variance created by this application. Second, the site plan decision relates to board members' knowledge of the business and location in terms of traffic and pedestrian flow and the applicant's assertions that the proposal will alleviate congestion while providing better service in a desirable product line. If approved, eight sets of revised plans would need to be submitted complying with all non-wavable city engineer requirements. Three, the Use Variance decision relates to the enlargement of a slightly non-conforming use, commercial is permitted but not restaurants, and the need for natural expansion of a viable business which also wishes to modernize and update the menu and cater to modern tastes. The Hurricane Sandy damage may be considered as a motivating factor wherein the destruction was so extensive that a forward-looking makeover makes more sense than a mere remediation as was. Four, the front setback variance is a small one-story area that would have no impact on mass on the street and which provides additional window service alleviating congestion at busy times. And finally, the side setback issues are related to the board's observation as to whether or not there are any impacts on neighbors. As to the new angled roof over the burger section, it slopes away from the windows of the condo building to the left, ending at the highest point, 17 feet 11 inches above grade, at 18 feet 4 inches away from the property line. Per zoning, a second floor on this building could be 30 feet above the first floor level or 34 above curb and could be 7 and 1/2 feet from that property line. No additional conditions are suggested at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Mr. Chairman, my name is Chris Ballenson, I represent C Square LLC and its principal, Christopher Clayton, with respect to its application this evening to the planning board for what we all know as Margate Dairy Bar, which is at 9510 Ventnor Avenue, it's in the C2 zoning district and identified on the tax map as lot 45 in block 129. As you heard Mr. Rubin say, this application requires a D variance because believe it or not, at the location that the Dairy Bar is, having been there for some 60 years in its C2 zone, in our C2 -- although it's a commercial zone, the next intense commercial zone that we have next to the CBD district, restaurants are not permitted, though this restaurant, as I indicated, has been there in some form or another for some 60 years. The expansion to the building, I should start out by saying, when we look at expansion of a non-conforming use, the expansion really has nothing to do with the intensity of the use.
Chris?
You can pull it off of there.
Thank you.
The expansion just allows for the fill-in of this nook right here, which is dead space as it is, for an additional service window to kind of alleviate some of those lines in the front. And the only other expansion is the connecting of this one-story storage building that I'm pointing to now on the rendered site plan, along with additional storage and an office on the second floor. That essentially is the only expansion of the footprint, so to speak. But what I think you're going to hear tonight, and it seems like, which is great, it seems like I'm here every month now with another application where somebody's either bringing a new business into Margate or expanding a business, we are certainly bucking the trend in terms of commercial activity in town, especially in South Jersey. We're very, very, very fortunate in that regard. But what Chris has done, and what you're going to hear tonight, it's kind of exciting, while this is a renovation of the Dairy Bar, for all intents and purposes, this is going to appear like a new building. He's hired Richard Stokes from Stokes Architecture, who has done such projects, and he'll tell you better than I can, but the Continental in Philadelphia, the Continental at the pier, Budokan, some of the Starlight Lounge in Wildwood, some of the Duop-themed product that you see in architectural magazines, seen around here, particularly in Wildwood or in Philadelphia. So Chris has spared no expense in bringing in an architect who actually can carry out what you see in the renderings that have been presented to you. This is going to be a really, really, really cool building when it's done, should the board approve what it is. And what I think's great about this application is all of us have always gone by and kind of have noticed that there's this different restaurant attached to it, and every year it's something different, whether it's Mango or Mateo's or Dune, whatever it may be. It just doesn't look like it fits. And Chris has been working on this for a long time, and now with the storm, it really has come time to do it. And what you're going to see, and what you're going to hear about tonight, which is really a neat project, and if you look at this rendering that I'm looking at here, which is the front elevation, the restaurant really becomes part of the Dairy Bar with hamburgers, shakes, ice cream piler types of food products to go along with the Dairy Bar and the Dairy Bar theme. What you see on the second floor, as Roger had pointed out, is this roof that slopes away from the adjacent building. That's not another room up there. If anybody has been into Mateo's or into Mango, you'll know it's kind of like Louis Ventura's downstairs. It's about eight foot high and it's very uncomfortable, it's very claustrophobic. That almost doubles your ceiling height, and all in a glass-enclosed area, giving you an exceptional feeling of light air and open space in that sit-down restaurant area, which where we both sit down and take out. Right, with Craig points, you can see it there, with Craig points too, it just appears to be a whole different space, a lot of volume, a lot of light, a lot of air, very, very comfortable sitting area whether off the beach or in the evening for dinner or late-night snack. Aside from the D variance, there really is very little discretionary relief that we're asking for in terms of the expansion of the building, there are some setback variances, but that's really it, because we're working off the existing footprint for the most part. There had been in previous incarnations of this plan, a second floor, there's no longer a second floor proposed, just this first-floor expansion incorporating the restaurant into the Dairy Bar, and a whole new facade treatment, which is really, really going to be exciting, kind of an iconic attention-grabber at that location, at that end of town in the C2 zoning district. What I'd like to do is have Chris and Richard and John Barnhart all swear at the same time, save us a couple minutes in terms of swearing them in, and then they can start the testimony. If you guys want to stand up, I can raise your hand. For Clayton?
Richard Stokes?
John Barnhart? There is not another microphone, is there?
No, not like, no, sorry.
Richard, you're going to testify first.
Just make sure that picks me up, I will speak loud.
Okay.
Richard, you are a licensed professional architect?
I am.
And where are you licensed?
State of New Jersey.
Okay, and you have prepared the architectural plans and the renderings that have been submitted to the board for their consideration?
That's correct.
Would you give the board the benefit, and I can comment in the final a little bit, give the board the benefit of some of your experience, which has specialized in now the art of建筑, projects you've been involved in that we might be familiar with?
Okay. Yeah, Chris brought me to the project actually a couple of years ago and kind of sucked me out. We've been involved with most of Steven Star's restaurants, we've done, and others. So far, we've done 26 restaurants, about 12 per Star, including four in Atlantic City, two at the pier, Caesars, the Continental, and Budokan. And then we're involved in the renovation of the Chelsea Hotel here in Atlantic City, and we designed the Tablitskis. So Tablitskis and the Continental, very much so in kind of what we might call the Duop mid-century modern style. I've also been very involved in working in the city of Wildwood, where Wildwood has a number of mid-century modern motels. We wrote a book on preserving those motels about 10 years ago, and we've done many projects down there for both for the Maury's organization, for other clients, and for the three separate cities down there, including the gateway sign into the boardwalk in the city of Wildwood. So looking at all that, Chris called me here and we, with the whole idea of reinventing the Dairy Bar. And the Dairy Bar, as you know, is very iconic structure, it's been here forever, and very, you know, ongoing viable business. And it struck me is the look of the Dairy Bar, it's very simple, very simple minimal structure, but it had the kind of angled windows and had the turquoise lumen and so -- but the rest of it was kind of not, as Chris mentioned, the side, the restaurant and the side of it was not really in keeping with the style of the original building. So it really kind of takes away from it, I think. So our idea is to really take that restaurant and integrate it in with the Dairy Bar, but creating a whole new image here. So in that regard, the existing restaurant was a very difficult space, very low ceilings, less than eight feet, not a pleasant space to spend any amount of time in or to eat in. So our main goal here was to essentially raise the roof of that space and creating a roof that's kind of, that's angled, very similar, almost the same angle as the existing angled windows for the Dairy Bar, and yet creating a very open, as you can see in this rendering, open, light-filled space with windows that actually are above the roof of the Dairy Bar, bringing in a lot of light, a lot of daylight, making a bright kind of fun space to spend a little bit of time in, eating your burger, your ice cream.
Richard, with that memory right there you're looking at now, that's as if you're standing at the back of the restaurant looking towards Ventnor Avenue?
That's correct, yes. So this looks right towards Ventnor Avenue, and you see large glass window there, so we wanted to open it up to the street, open it up to the city. Right now, it's a very small, confining little entrance to the existing restaurant. And then create an indoor area for this new concept, which he'll expound on further, is this new line of burgers. And so you come in, you order your burger, and then there's approximately 57 seats inside, and then some exterior seats still. But to create this indoor seating, which of course Dairy Bar doesn't have right now, and also to bring it up to modern-day standards, for instance, Dairy Bar has no public restrooms right now. So this will bring in two ADA-accessible restrooms. And also, bring in the whole building up to standards. As you know, the building was flooded out with Hurricane Sandy, so we will be floodproofing the building as part of our renovation of the building, gut renovation, waterproofing the whole exterior per Jim Galantino, and floodgates at the exterior doors. So we'll be bringing everything back up to code. Dairy Bar is an existing building, nothing been done to it in the past 50 years. So we'll be really, you know, basically this is kind of a gut rehab, bringing everything back to current standards here.
Did you also lay out the interior floor plan and how that's going to fall?
I did.
Do you have that floor plan there, do you mind that rendering, Ken?
I do.
I know these plans have been submitted to the board, so if you...
Okay. So this is, uh, Venter Avenue, uh, on the left side, you're looking at the plan, and, uh, Madison Avenue on the bottom of the plan. The existing Dairy Bar footprint is, is this box here. Will be expanding into the existing restaurant, which, which their kitchen actually was in approximately the same location, with a separate kitchen for the, for the new burger concept. And then, um, it's a small area, as was noted, um, that would be expanded in the front of the restaurant, allowing us for, uh, three, uh, windows on the front of the restaurant, and then one window on the side of the restaurant, for a total of four.
The window on the side will be accessible, will be ADA?
Yeah, that's correct. The window on the, uh, side will be, uh, ADA accessible. Um, and then the new entrance, approximately same location as the existing restaurant, and with our new, uh, dining area. Um, basically the same footprint as the existing building, um, but as I mentioned, with, uh, new, uh, handicapped accessible restrooms in the rear, um, the, um, and then filling in a small outdoor alley in the rear, and creating, uh, much-needed, uh, service space, uh, freezers for the ice cream, um, enclosed trash area, which, uh, exists now, and, uh, small, uh, second floor area for, uh, much-needed, uh, storage and, uh, office. So, going back over the, um, the exterior, um, so some of the, uh, materials we'll be using would be a, uh, mosaic tile base, uh, we'll be using new, uh, aluminum, uh, fascia here, the same exact turquoise, this will be a custom color as the, uh, Dairy Bar. Um, the actual signage here is really the same signage as you, as you see now, um...
But in terms of dimensions of, in terms of dimension of... Uh, that's consistent with what's there now?
Correct.
And you're gonna try and replicate that on the side street, so as to have...
That's correct. We will be replicating that sign on Madison Avenue, that exact same sign on Madison Avenue. Um, the sign will be lit the same way it is now, tap lighting, um, and then there'll be new awnings with, um, signage on the face of the awning, um, these are retractable awnings as exists now, um, and a decorative neon band across the, um, front of the facade, and then one neon band which would accentuate the, uh, the angled roof of the, uh, of the burger bar area.
And the signs that are proposed, I, I know they are, obviously, this is probably an original sign, but they're consistent with the, with the style, with the theme of what we're doing?
Exactly, yeah, because then in, uh, mid-century modern doo-wop architecture, signage, signage is a major thing. And one of the things that, when I first saw the Dairy Bar, that really struck me about the Dairy Bar was its, was its cool signage with Margate in the, in its, in that, in that script, uh, lettering that was so consistent with the 50s look.
Having, we've included even, even the lettering across the kitchen?
So, yeah, so once again with the, um, with the materials, you know, basically replicating the same kind of materials, um, as are there now, but making, upgrading them for the, for the new century here, and then tying in the rest of the building with the look of the Dairy Bar. So, because, um, for instance, on the backside, there are my, a number of, like, sheds and things that were added, they're not consistent with the look of it, so we'll be tying everything together for a one consistent, organized look here.
Thanks very much, Richard. I, I have a couple more witnesses for the... The layout of the building, or the style of the building, please, take advantage of that opportunity.
I have a question. Uh, I don't see, maybe I missed it. Where, where are your air conditioning units going to be placed?
Um, there'll be two.
In relationship to the building next door?
There'll be a small one on the roof of the main Dairy Bar, which'll air condition the Dairy Bar, and there'll be a unit right here at the back of the angled roof, which will be on a low, flat roof, and we will create a parapet around it on both sides that will screen the view of that unit and the noise from that unit.
Where's that first one, on this roof?
Um, it's on the existing Dairy Bar roof, and you see that, it says exhaust there.
One's marked, one's not, is that correct?
Yeah, there's one that, it says, there, there's one that says exhaust there, so that'll be the exhaust.
I thought that might be the, uh, the grill exhaust.
Yeah, and there's actually, excuse me, there is, there will be a small one there that's not marked on this plan.
Okay.
How, how close are they to the building next door? I, I, I find it hard to...
Um, that, that unit would be, um, approximately, approximately eight feet from that, from the building next door.
President. I'm sorry, Clark. Richard?
Richard.
Mr. Wilduski has a couple questions.
Okay.
Your new roof slopes right down... I thought I had it on, sorry. Uh, your new roof slopes right down and ends about at the property line, and all the stormwater's gonna flow in that direction. How are you gonna handle that?
Uh, there'll be a gutter there.
Build into the roof?
There'll be a gutter built into the roof, that's correct.
And you'll bring the drains down internally?
That's right, everything will be internal.
Okay. Now, on the floodproofing, uh, where is the elevation of the, all the various window sills relative to the, uh, required base flood elevation?
We are floodproofing up, uh, uh, three feet.
Are your window sills above three feet?
Excuse me?
Are your window sills above three feet?
The, um, the window sill for the, for the front Dairy Bar is, is actually, we've raised it, right now, it's only about, uh, 12, uh, about 15 inches from grade, and we've raised this up to approximately 30 inches, because we still wanted to get the, uh, sloped, um, slope glazing here. And, uh, we've, uh, we've, uh, discussed this with the, um, with, uh, Jim Gallantino, and, uh, about the, what we're doing for the, uh, floodproofing for the perimeter and for all the, um, exterior doors, and, uh, he's, he's approved that, and, uh, actually approved our reconstruction permit for the existing building.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First, I'd like to just thank you all for hearing us tonight, and also for the community that came out, uh, to support us. Um, here it is, uh, it's been in my head for about eight or nine years, finally spilled out. Um, I purchased the Dairy Bar back in 2003. Uh, at that time, it didn't really look like it did even the last few years. Um, as some of the neighbors may be able to attest, there used to be trash out the street here, where that's where they kept the recycles and trash out on the curb. There was no gate and anything where the trash was. Um, I have to admit, when I bought the Dairy Bar, I bought it because I had an option to purchase the property. I'm gonna be perfectly honest, I sold two townhomes over there, back in the day, but as we, um, started to renovate it, my family and I, and as I mentioned in our, in my business plan, we kinda emptied our bank accounts because it was kinda like the Tom Hanks and Shelley Long movie, where, uh, I'm very sorry, I talk quickly and I didn't wanna take too much time.
Slow down.
Okay, my apologies. So, it ended up, as you know, when you buy an old building and you're the guy that gets caught with it, you know, you go in there and you find out that the floor needs to be replaced, and the pipes are rotten, and the machines are old, and the, nothing works, and, uh, so we started to, uh, renovate the property and try to make just very simple improvements. I'm a little analytical and I pay attention to details, so, you know, we were able to improve the, the traffic flow both inside and out, make the third window operational. Um, but, you know, in doing so, I, I started to see the limitations of the property, um, as, as, uh, Chris had alluded to. When I came down the shore, I came down in a van with everything I had in it to work for Lou Ventour when he bought the Greenhouse. Back at that time, it was the blazing barbecue next door, which I can't imagine being a neighbor next door to that, barbecue afterwards. Um, after that, uh, it was a restaurant, then it was Santone's, then it was Madison Avenue Cafe, and then it was Dune, and then it was Mango's, and all these folks seemed to try to wanna capture the magic of those families that have come for generations to the Dairy Bar outside and get them into the restaurant. However, what I saw is something that didn't match, it didn't fit. But when I started to really get to know the community and start to talk to some of the folks that have been around here a long time, and boy, I met a lot of them, you know, I've met women that worked there in the 50s, and, you know, I get a lot of stories, but, you know, a few come to mind, Charlie McInerney, who's in, uh, Longport, and, uh, Steve Marshall and guys like that, go, "Chris, I remember when I used to ride my bike right in here and get a burger, and man, I bought your girl Dairy Bar burger back then, you were getting kissed, and there was trampolines across the street, and, you know, it was a different era." Um, but I remembered that and it stuck in my head, and also, one of the advantages I have by being a operational owner, um, I have a financial planning business by day, but at night and weekends, I put on apron, and I become a dishwasher and a table cleaner and a greeter, not only for the Dairy Bar, but for the city of Margate, because I'm very proud of the city of Margate, very proud to be operating here, and, uh, so, you know, I'm out there. I meet everybody, four-year-olds and 80-year-olds and 90-year-olds, I've met Steven Spielberg and his wife in line, I've met Phillies, I've met Yankees, but you know something? Everyone's important to us there. Whether you're three or four, you're 90, you're at the Dairy Bar, and your grandfather brought your father, and your father brought you, and you bring your kids, and your kids will bring their kids, and that's what I'm here to galvanize, is to make sure that this landmark destination is here for generations to come.
Chris, so tell us about the incorporation of the restaurant.
Absolutely.
And how you envision that working, and how that's part of your, your...
All right, thank you. Um, one of the things that I heard outside from the Dairy Bar guests is obviously, there's a lot of people that solicit information to you, so the biggest thing you can do in any business, whether you're in the ice cream business, or my financial planning business, or being a good husband or good business partner, is just listening, and listening to people, and they'll tell you what they want, in their music, in their style, in what they say. So a lot of what I heard at the Dairy Bar is, Chris, you know, your lines are too long. They're too long, I'm sorry, I'm your friend, but it looks like a crime scene, I, I can't stop there. Uh, also, what I heard is you don't have any bathrooms. Well, we're window service, so I really couldn't. Uh, I'm also a single father, who has had to change thousands of diapers over a knee in a bathroom at the airport, because they think somehow men can't be, bad, bad, or some, I don't know, we don't have changing tables. Um, but also, next door, what I saw in that restaurant...
And that's why you have two bathrooms in both rooms?
Yep, absolutely. I have two ADA bathrooms, I have a mother with eight screws in her back and two plates, and I'm very, very sensitive when people park in handicap areas and everything like that, but I also, you know, we meet a lot of people at the Dairy Bar, and there's a lot of great folks, and some of them have, you know, disability issues, so, you know, we have to handle that. Um, what I also observed right away was in the restaurant area, if any of you have been in there or eaten in there, it's like a, it's like a coffin. I'm very claustrophobic, if you came to my house, you'll feel like you're outside, because the ceilings go so high and everything. And when you're in that restaurant, whether, and I thought Dune did a great job of dressing it up and everything, but man, you know, there's a nine-foot, a nine-inch difference between the back of the restaurant and the front of the restaurant, with a step that goes up the middle, with yellow tape and every, and, and I really love the feud, I would spend a thousand dollars a year in Dune, um, but it just never seemed to match the gemra. But one of the things I wanna bring the attention, maybe what the other gentleman is, I'm not only trying to bring the Dairy Bar into the future, I'm trying to go back to the future, which is back to the past at the Dairy Bar. And when I talk to folks and they say, "Man, I used to get a great burger there, and I used to be outside," you know, people don't go down the shore to get in, they go down the shore to go out.
So explain us then how this restaurant's gonna work, how you...
Absolutely. If you'll notice...
A typical customer that would get ice cream and use it?
Absolutely, okay, so here's a couple things. I also have been at the Dairy Bar, or in Margate, long enough that I remember Bombers, if any remember Bombers, they had the best little donuts and coffee, and it's outside on that screen porch, and you'd read the Philadelphia Bulletin. So I wanted to take it back outside. So what you have here is I've gone back to the future. I, basically, if you look at that, and, and this is why I chose Richard, because he understands this gemra, you feel like you're outside the Continental Martini Bar a little bit, and when you're outside the Continental Martini Bar, you feel like you're outside, even though you're inside. So I wanted to bring that experience back for the Charlie McInerneys and the Steve Marshalls, and, I apologize. So I wanted to bring this back to what it was, in a way. But the other thing I noticed is, I'm a big one for, I don't mind competing with anyone in town, because I think that our product extends beyond what we serve people. Our product is our employees, the way we train them. We're training men and women to go out in the world and be courteous and conscious and bring customer service back. And so, people spend millions of dollars on businesses these days, and they still don't get customer service, because they don't know how to be friendly.
Chris, slow down, please.
I apologize.
Chris, then tell us what kind of food items you're gonna have, what can we expect to get?
Okay, here's what you can expect to get at the Dairy Bar. Right now, we have some beautiful restaurants in town, Stephen Cookies, Tomatoes, The Greenhouse, Johnny's, and these are very nice restaurants, they have alcohol, which means that if you're someone like me, I don't necessarily wanna go out with my kids into a place with booze where unfortunately, there are adults our age that act like children. Um, I love these places, I love eating them. We also have a lot of great pizza parlors and everything, but one of the things I heard from my guests is that, gee, Chris, there just doesn't seem to be enough family food options in town anymore. I have a choice, I can leave the beach early and get a babysitter, and go to Stephen Cookies and Tomatoes, they certainly, their cookies great, karma's great, but they don't want your three-person stroller in there. Or I can decide what I'm gonna eat off a pizza parlor and don't feel good off of their menu. But where's that sit-down restaurant that we used to have back in the 50s and 60s and all that stuff, and growing up in Margate, you know, where are the Bombers? So what I tried to do is recreate that, so the type of food, I've been on a quest for five to six years, I've been to every Shake Shack, I've had everything on their menu, I've been to every BurgerFi in Florida, I've almost been arrested taking pictures of corners and windows and lights, and sitting there and watching the traffic flow. I've been to Taylor's Automatic Refresher in Napa, I've been in an Out Burger, I've been to a New Emmy Burger, I've seen what I like and I don't like in a roll. A lot of times as an adult, we, our tastes change, but I like to think like a seven-year-old. How's that fluffy bun? What's that burger gonna feel like and taste like in my mouth? So what I did was, I went up to New York and met with Pat LaFrida. Pat LaFrida makes burgers for Five Knacken Burger, Shake Shack, some of the best burger joints in the world, he does a lot of work with Danny Meyer, who's the chef that owns all these. And I signed a contract with Burg, with Pat LaFrida over a year ago, to make the Dairy Bar burger, and we've been working on it in their test kitchen for over two years. I, I'm bringing to the table 100% Black Angus burger, but that's not really, Black Angus, what's that mean? We're only using short rib and brisket, and it's gonna be ground in such a way, and seared on a grill, so that it's gonna be beautiful, it's gonna be something that a four-year-old wants, a 15-year-old wants, and it's gonna be at a price point that the community can afford it, and go out and have a good time, and bring grandmom, and bring your kids.
What other kind of food items do you anticipate having, aside from, uh, high-end?
Well, I, you know, a lot of times in the restaurant thing, we like to go and think we're gonna be everything to everyone, and fortunately, I also brought Gem Consulting in, that does a lot of the kitchens and everything in the casinos, and between them and some of the chefs, because I was an executive chef for years, were nice enough to get together with me and look at things, I realized that sometimes reality is a little bit different. And the size of the Dairy Bar and the kitchen and the menu has to kinda meet around the kitchen, because if I'm going hunting for elephant, I better be ready for elephant. So we brought the menu down, to, my thinking is, do a few things, but do them well, do them great, and make the whole thing nice, and you have to be able to get the food out of this kitchen, it can be a great burger, if I have to wait a half an hour for it, that's part of the experience, that's part of my product. Can I keep the area clean? Can I make it consistent? So what we've done is, I've basically going to do burgers, a turkey burger that's half dark meat and half white meat, again, Pat LaFrida's worked with me to get it going on, a nice Martin's potato roll...
Excuse me. Chris?
Chris, we have a long meeting tonight.
I got you. Okay. So, hot dogs, hamburgers, fries. I'm going to do breakfast. I want to bring that, I'm going to bring a donut machine, a robot machine into this front window that makes the donuts for the kids. In the morning, you walk by, you watch the donut thing going into the dough and boom, boom, boom. So, donuts, California breakfast burritos, cash and carry, Rich. There's, you know, people don't want to cook at home, but they also don't want to wait 15 minutes to get into a tiny little breakfast joint.
What's your, Chris, what's your timeline with respect? I know you're, now you're doing... To get open for the summer. What's your timeline with respect to this project?
Okay.
What can we, when can we expect to see?
Okay. Here's what you can expect to see. I was trying to get the whole project done right away, and what happened was, you know, this flood hit and kind of just really knocked me off my feet. So, what we decided was, we would break the project into two phases. The first phase was more or less just rebuilding the Dairy Bar portion of, which we've already done through permits that have already been approved and we've started. If you go in by the Dairy Bar, you can see we're laboriously working to try to get that part open. However, I didn't want to be disrespectful to the community and my guests by having an open construction site during the summer. So, what I intend to do is, and after our season ends at the end of September, we will begin Phase Two, where we will take out that Mango's restaurant there, remove the roof, remove and upgrade the walls, make sure that the footings are proper, make sure that the floor is right, make sure that you have all the nice composites and textures. You have an open flow here where you basically can come in one side and out the other to address the bike issue at night in front of, in front of where our trash area is, we're going to create a bike corral so that you can bring your bike and get a ticket, kind of like when you're in Vail, you hand your skis in and go to operate skate. Come in, get in line, okay? We're also going to employ digital menu boards, okay, so that people can read the menu better. We're going to also have a point-of-sale system, but the neatest thing, you've been in Wawa and punched your thing into that sandwich, imagine if you could rip that thing off and give it to a bright young man or woman to be able to go out in line and start asking questions. Would you like to place your order? You can place it there. You want, you want to keep your mind, that's fine. How big's your milkshake? It's 22 ounces. Can I split it? No, but get a courtesy cup.
Now, Chris, we've done some research in terms of the seating. We're showing... For 75, you're well below that. So, in terms of the sit-down...
That is correct.
...service the area.
That is correct. I will have...
What you're doing is you're just increasing the number of takeout windows by one, is that true?
That's correct.
Having an accessible window on the side street?
Madison Avenue. That'll be at 32 to 34, 32 to 34 High.
So, we're looking at the build-out of the remainder of the project coming hopefully to start in September.
If I can get the money, I'm building it.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Clayton?
Yeah. I won't be quite as long.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to give you a little bit of history of that place. An apartment building next door to you, which I think has concerns about this application, was built by Jack Friedman in about 1955. He was denied by the planning board because his building was not designed properly. He'd come back with the design he has now, where the building next door to you is only three feet from you. My question to you is, that building's there, you were there first, Mr. Friedman knew of that. Did you discuss with your neighbors what you planned to do?
It's hard for me not to discuss with my neighbors what I plan to do, sir.
You didn't?
No, I did. I've discussed with every neighbor that'll talk to me what my plans were, are, are going to be.
Oh, good.
I've heard some of the concerns.
And one of the reasons, Chris, you decided not to do a full segment for was just that reason?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, one of the issues where, again, I brought in someone that just does this to be sensitive to the project, is to make sure that that, you know, doesn't necessarily infringe upon them to the extent that I can. I'm not trying to come over, I'm not trying to go up. I mean, if I was building two townhomes there, I assume I could go up 30 feet in the air.
The only reason you're doing that roof addition is to get some increased ceiling height in the restaurant to make that a comfortable eating area.
Absolutely. Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. It was so long.
John, you're a licensed professional engineer, professional planner, state of Jersey.
That's correct.
And you did the site plan that's been submitted before consideration?
Correct.
And what are your expectations for this application? Is we are asking for a site plan approval, the home and the variances and C variances?
Correct.
If you can find out, we'll just take a search of the property and the surrounding uses. Then just go through the setback rates in order to put and assign various applications out there.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to, have we been marking these, Chris?
No, they're...
All right. I'm going to refer, yeah. That's fine. I'm referring to a variance exhibit which was created by our office, which is, it's the site plan that was submitted with the application with some color put to it for clarity and discussion. As Chris pointed out, the, well, Chris, as everybody's pointed out, I think we're all familiar with exactly what is going to take place on the property with the renovation of the Dairy Bar, the, I'll say, the takeover of the former restaurant to become part of that facility, and then the expand, some expansion areas to the rear of the property and a small expansion area to the front of the property. So, I think you've already got a good history, so I'll kind of skip that and just get right to, right to the facts of this case, dealing with the variances. As part of the property expansion, there are a couple of different elements. The first, the first element is a small expansion along Vetner Avenue, which you see in the yellow shaded area there, which fills in an existing alcove of the Dairy Bar building to help create the front facade and the space that is proposed with the application. The second expansion of the structure is to the rear, which basically creates a connection between an existing storage building, a storage and trash building in the rear of the property, and the main building. The third area I'll call the expansion comes toward Madison Avenue, which creates a covered trash area. And then finally, there is proposed to be a small second story on that back area for an office and, and I guess additional storage potentially, but I think mainly an office area. So, that is, that's, that's the extent of the improvements that are proposed to the site itself.
Where are the restrooms?
The restrooms are within the restaurant. Yes, they're right about in here, is that correct?
Oh.
Yep. Yeah, actually, right here.
Will they be operational this summer?
What's that?
Will they be operational this summer?
Open to ice cream side and donuts side. Oh.
No, this summer. Next summer. That's the second part. Okay. Phase Two.
Okay. So, with those expansions, a few, a few C variances are created, and then, as Roger's report points out, because we're expanding a use, although it's a commercial use in a commercial zone, we're expanding a use that is technically not permitted in this zone, being a restaurant, that creates a D variance. I'll speak quickly, quickly, but hope, slow enough so you can, to the C variances first. I think they're kind of the easier ones, and then we'll talk about the D element of the application. The first variance that is necessary in order to, for us to achieve approval this evening is with regard to front yard setback. We've developed the average front yard setback, and it is required to be 10 feet at this location. We're proposing to match the front yard setback of, I'll say, about a little over 60% of the building frontage at 5.2 feet with this little proposed fill-in area. So, with regard to justification for that, it's, it's a fill-in of an existing building. It essentially has zero impact from, for, for any of the surrounding land uses. At the, at the end of this renovation, it's one of those, one of those expansion areas that you likely will not even realize took place because of the fact that it's getting no closer to Vetner Avenue and just fills in that void. So, I think that, that variance is pretty simple. We go, the second set of variances deals, deal with side yard setback. You have, you have two situations going on within the side yard. As you know, your requirement for side yard setback is five feet minimum, and in this case, we need 12 and a half feet in the combined side yard. The existing building sits about, about a half a foot off of that side property line. As a result of creating the roof lines that Mr. Stokes has developed, we're bringing that, bringing that roof up. So, that, that open, that open volume area, because we're bringing that roof up, creates a setback that is non-conforming with that expanded area.
That's just the extension, the vertical extension to...
That is correct. It is not a second floor or a second story. It is just expansion to, to create that open volume within the building and obviously the appearance of the building. Also, with regard to that side yard setback or the expanded areas that I spoke about a moment ago in the rear, the fill-in area, and additionally, the second story area over the garage, over the existing garage also requires a side yard setback variance where a minimum of five feet is required. We're proposing at each of those locations along the building for the roof expansion to match the existing at a half a foot, and also in the rear area to match the existing at 3.1 feet. Again, those are both variances that are necessary in order to achieve the project.
John, the connection, the connection element, that's...
That is correct. The connection element is a single story. And the, the second part of the side yard setback variance request deals with what really kind of appears to be the rear, but is technically a side area, is that we are, we are at 5.2 feet from the proposed expansion area and the second story area, which meets the requirement as a minimum. But when you look at the combined side yard as per what your ordinance requires, we're required to have 12 and a half feet if you add the two side yards together. So, if you, if you have, if you add the 3, 3.1 feet to the 5.2 feet on that ground floor area, we're at 8.2, I'm sorry, 8.3 where 12 and a half is required. And if you look at the upper floors where we're creating that additional volume to the front of the building, we're technically at, basically the 5.2 and the six inches, so 5.7 feet where, again, 12 and a half feet is required.
John, one of the things we have to look at when we talk about that variance and whether...
Off the left.
Yeah, we do have two side yards, correct?
That is correct.
And the side yard criteria has got to be 12.5 total.
Correct.
It's either 5.5 and 7, or 7.5 and 5.5.
Correct.
7.5 and 5. If this goes, if this property were developed where...
That would be correct, yeah. Yep. So...
And covering substantially more larger part of the...
That is also correct, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I've explained the side yard setback. Well, you know, obviously, one of the things that are of biggest concern with regard to the side yard setback is because we're so close to the property line. And, you know, there do have, there does happen to be a, as Mr. Santori pointed out, there happens to be an apartment building right next to this site, and that apartment building is only about, again, as Mr. Santori correctly pointed out, it's almost exactly three feet from that side property line. There are windows at the second level. What I looked at, and although I don't have an exact measurement, what I looked at is where those windows were as compared to what Mr. Stokes has designed. They're at the second level, they are shallow, they're, they're not tall windows, they're, they are up toward the eve of that roof. There's a couple steps up into that building. I've estimated the bottom of those windows to be between 13 and 14 feet above the ground to the bottom of the window, the sill. And if you look at Mr. Stokes's plan, I believe he's about 14, 14, 10? He's 14, 10 to his, to his roof. I'll go back to this for a second, because I think this is important. He's about 14 feet, 10 inches to his roof, and then, and then it slopes away. So, what I was looking at is, what is the real blockage of air and light and open space to that, that top, that top section of windows that you go, as you go across that apartment building? And basically, what you have is, you have that corner pretty, pretty darn close to matching the elevation of, of the bottom of the windows. So, the air and light coming from, you know, coming obviously from up above should, should be pretty well preserved. And, and I think that's pretty, that's pretty important because of what, going back to what Chris stated with, with the potential that's there. With this project, this renovation that's taking place, although there, I'm not going to say there's not some blockage. I mean, we're building, we're, we're taking volume up right along that property line. There's no doubt, you know, there's no question, there's, there's some impact there. But when you look at what Mr. Clayton has set out and has proposed here, you know, in my mind, if I live in that unit next door, this kind of solidifies the fact that I'm going to have air, light and open space coming into those windows now and long into the future with this renovation that he has planned, as opposed to be concerned into the future that this building does get torn down and it does end up being two and a half stories, five feet from my line and really blocking my potential airspace and light space. So, there is an impact. There's no doubt there's an impact. There always is when you're, when you're creating that kind of volume along the property line. But I think Mr. Stokes has done a very good job of creating as minimal impact as possible while still obviously not creating a negative to his design and creating, you know, we think a real mini icon at this location. So...
John, I mean, right out the street, right out the street, they see the...
That's correct.
Which doesn't, which has no setback requirement, which, which, if this were...
That is correct.
Where both, a multifamily product would be the same scenario in terms of...
Again, correct. And as I mentioned, Mr. Stokes, you know, you, you can tell by looking at it, he took into account what his surroundings were. This wasn't done in a vacuum. That, that roof could have been sloping this way, his high point being at the, being at that side property line. That roof could have been straight across, again, bringing that elevation up. But he, he took, took care in what his surroundings were in creating the design.
John, in terms of the positive criteria under land use, that the...
There are three purposes of zoning that, that we believe are advanced, which support the D variances that, that we need to request this evening. The first is the promotion of general welfare, which is an argument you hear a lot on, on the D variance application. I believe that this promotes the general welfare because obviously, you're taking, you're taking a real, a real staple of the city of Margate. It's something that's been there since 1952 or 51, I believe. And you are, you're, you're keeping that, that thriving business in town and you're, and you're making it even better. You have, you have a business that's been, as far as I understand, wildly successful for a great number of years. Mr. Clayton has taken it to even the next level. Does he have to do this, a project like this? No, he doesn't. But he believes that much in this project, he believes that much in the city of Morgate, and he wants to take it to that next level and really make it something beautiful and spectacular. So all of those aspects, we believe, promotes the general welfare. This site, when you look at the D variants, and during, as part of the promotion of general welfare, you have to look at whether a site is particularly well-suited for a use. Well, this use is not permitted in this zone because it's a restaurant, but this site is particularly well-suited for this use because it's already there. It's been a restaurant for a number of years. It's been the Morgate Dairy Bar for a great number of years. What Mr. Clayton proposes to do is actually bring the two independent uses together as one, allow them to operate as a very similar or same type of use on that same piece of property. So for all those reasons, this site is clearly particularly well-suited for the use. Two other special reasons that we believe that advance the purposes of zoning with this application are providing a desirable visual environment through creative design techniques. Mr. Stokes has explained to you his design and plan, Mr. Clayton has obviously given you his vision in great detail. This is a, it really is, it's not a huge building, it's not a huge site, but it is going to become, when he is done, it's going to become a little icon in this town. It's going to be something that if you're from here, you know it, but you're going to think it's a really cool place to go. If you're not from here and you drive by it, you're probably going to remember it because it's going to be very interesting and very unique. So for that reason, we believe that purpose of zoning is advanced. And the last one, which is one I'm getting to use a lot now, and that is security from flood, fire, and other natural, may have made disasters. He had a building that took a big hit with a storm, as many or most of the buildings in the city of Morgate have. It was, you know, he's been talking about this project, as he said, for six or seven years, and now's the time. He received all that damage, and there's no time like now to, for him to be able to bring this building into compliance and make it something even better than it has been for over 60 years. So I believe that there are basically three very strong purposes of zoning that are advanced with this application that support the use variance.
Do you therefore think the variance can be granted without...
I do. When you look at the public good, as I mentioned, you know, the adjacent neighbors, there's an issue there, obviously, because there is some impact. We are making this building taller, we're making the building a little bit bigger, and hopefully the building becomes even more successful. But I think the benefits of an application like this clearly outweigh any potential negatives that are created with this expansion. When you look at the zone plan or the zoning ordinance, it's a commercial zone, we're a commercial use. Restaurants aren't permitted in this zone, but this restaurant and these two restaurants, we'll call it, have been at this location for pushing 60 years. It's not, we're not introducing a use to this location that the surrounding land users are not used to or comfortable with. And for that reason, we believe that the zone plan and zoning ordinance is not impaired.
Thank you.
Oh, yep, let me go through the sign rate. Okay, we discovered some sign variances that are necessary, and I will again try to deal with them succinctly so that we don't lengthen this anymore that we need to. But there are two elevations of this building. The elevation that I'm looking at here is the Vettner Avenue elevation, and the, it's in this, Chris. And then the elevation on Madison Avenue is proposed to contain the same signage, with the exception of one sign that's not shown in this elevation, and that is, right at this location, there are proposed to be two words which say Burger Bar. So I have an exhibit here, Chris, if you can put that up here. I have an exhibit here which identifies the dimensions of the sign so that I can get for you on the record exactly what the deviations are from the ordinance. So, yeah, this is good. So this is standing on the corner, basically standing in the middle of the intersection looking back at the building. I'll talk first about the Vettner Avenue side. You have the Morgate Dairy Bar since 1952 sign, we're calling that one sign. You then have the series of words Burgers, Ice Cream, Shakes, Floats, which are on what we're calling the valence of our tractable awning. And then, not shown here, but over on this side is, are the two words Burger Bar.
Right in here.
Correct. So what that creates on that Vettner Avenue side is a total sign area of 65 square feet, okay? You have a 40-square-foot Morgate Dairy Bar sign, you have a 20, I'm sorry, 41-square-feet. You have a 20-square-foot sign which is on the valence of the canopy, and then you have a five-square-foot sign which is Burger Bar. So you have 41, 20, 61 and 5, so I'm sorry, 66 square feet total in sign area on the Vettner Avenue side.
First, what...
Per your ordinance, we have a 50-foot frontage, the building is slightly less than 50 feet in width. So per your ordinance, we're permitted 35 square feet along that frontage of Vettner Avenue. So therein lies the variance, where 61 is proposed, 35 is permitted. I'll go to the second side, and then we'll do the justifications at the end. Looking now for a second at the Madison Avenue side, your zoning ordinance permits, when you are on a corner, it permits a second set of well-mounted signs on the second side, but it requires you to reduce that area to 50% of what your ordinance would otherwise permit. So to spell that out for you, the frontage along Madison Avenue is obviously much greater, and so it puts us into a category along that side which would permit 50 square feet if it were our first front, but because it's our second front, it permits 25 square feet. So on the Madison Avenue side, we are proposing 61 square feet because we do not have the Burger Bar words on the Madison Avenue side. We just have the Morgate Dairy Bar and the Burgers, Fries, Shakes, and Floats sign. So that is 61 square feet where 25 square feet per your ordinance would be permitted based on that being the second side. So are these variances justified? Well, if you look at the existing signage on the building...
Excuse me one minute.
Sure.
How does this relate to the signs that are there now? Is this larger than the signs?
Yeah, that's exactly, that's exactly what I was going to say. When you look, Mr. Stokes designed these signs basically based on the size of the signs that are there now. But what I noticed, I took a picture this evening, and I was actually looking at it as they were testifying, what I've noticed is that when you bring the building volume up, it actually makes the sign appear smaller because the signage now is more in scale with the size of that building elevation. Right now, it's a large sign, looks like large words on a very low building. Bringing this volume up, I think actually makes the sign look to be more in keeping with the size, and really frankly, as you can see, it's a sign, but it's part of the architecture. I mean, it's unique, it's interesting, and it's part of the icon, it really, really is. So while we deviate in area, we believe we don't deviate to create a nuisance, we don't create an unsafe condition, we create very, very nice, neat, clean identification of the site.
In terms of the size of that sign on Vettner Avenue, but if that's consistent...
That's correct. In fact, Mr. Stokes, in our discussions, modeled these signs after what was there to try to keep the nostalgia of the structure. And then the other, I believe there's, technically, we would technically require a variance also, Roger can clarify this, for number of signs, because your ordinance actually only permits one sign per side.
Yeah, correct.
Although it speaks to like clustered signs, or I think the words they use are sign groupings...
Yeah, you have three signs where only one...
Right, we technically on this side have three signs, and then I think technically on this side we have two signs. So one is permitted, we're proposing three on Vettner Avenue, two on Madison Avenue.
Did you calculate the square feet of the existing sign on Vettner compared to the 65?
I did not do that, no. I did not do that.
Okay. I would point out to the board that when it was two businesses on Vettner Avenue, each of them was entitled to 35 square feet. So you would have had at least two signs with 70 square feet as compared to 65.
Yeah, and in fact, in the photos I was just looking at, the two signs, the mango sign is still there. There are two signs on that Vettner Avenue frontage, that's correct.
Okay.
John?
Yes, sir.
On your signs, when you say it's X number of square feet...
Microphone?
Yes.
Microphone.
You say it's X number of square feet. That's actually the whole facet, that's not the square footage of the signage itself.
That is the conservative boxed-out approach, that's correct. If you look at this exhibit, you can see, it might be hard to see from there, but you can see the dashed light line that goes around it. That's the basis of the calculation. We could get to a smaller number if we...
Yeah, we did not circle the letters like that.
You can't, but, okay, actually, you can. There's a section of the ordinance that says you can closely circle the letters. Okay? So it's less than 65.
Actual square footage of sign per se is much less than your...
Yeah, especially for the Morgate Dairy Bar signs, that's correct. For these, there's not really too much you could take out of them. But for the Morgate Dairy Bar sign, if you come down around the 1952 and you take out some area between some of the words, you could bring that sign...
We're satisfied with the signs.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You're good.
That's all, that's all.
Good. Anyone from the board have anything? I'd like to open the public portion, so anyone here from the public would like to briefly speak about this application? Take no one, I close the public portion. Any comments from the board? Would you like, would you phrase the motion, please?
Yes, as Roger's report indicates, there's going to be a vote for site plan approval. There's going to be a vote for the D variance and use variance for expansion of a non-conforming use. And there's C variances for parking, building coverage, setbacks including front-side, combined-side, and for signs, for the number of signs and sign area. So I would suggest that we first vote on the D variance, and then we can vote on the other variances combined, I believe, would be easier.
Mr. Ruppert, I think you can do everything because...
Do you want to do everything?
Absolutely.
As long as the applicant's okay with that, we can do that.
Yeah, the two conditions are the satisfaction of the city engineer requirements and submitting the sign data for the file.
Thank you.
Can I ask one quick question? Is there any less parking than there was there now? Will there be any less parking than what's there now?
The existing parking is being maintained in its current configuration. The only comment I would have, it does encroach currently, and I don't know that there's a license agreement in place. If you'd like us to attempt to rectify that with the governing body, we can certainly do that, although we're just continuing an existing condition. I'd just prefer to leave it alone.
Chris, on the parking...
Yes.
I read in your application somewhere where you said you're going to need to encroach on the city property.
Yes, Mr. Santori, those spaces that are currently off of Madison Avenue where the picnic tables are, they encroach by about a foot into the right way, not onto the sidewalk, but into the right way.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
And if it doesn't matter now, we're just going to, that's not going to change.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so public is closed?
Yes.
So do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion, we approve all aspects of the application.
C, D, and site plan.
Site plans, site plan C and D, correct.
Michael Richmond?
I think the Dairy Bar is almost like a historic landmark in Morgate, and I think that in that sense maybe it deserves a little bit of special consideration. The sign issue, the signs are already about that size, so I don't think that's a big stretch to approve the signage, so I'm going to vote yes for it.
Adios, Santori.
I also approve of the application. I liked the part where the applicant said he did speak with the neighbors and seemed to have gotten some positive feedback from them. I don't know if he made any accommodations for any of their suggestions, but I always like to see that. The sign is not any problem, I always like to see signs. The apartments are actually out of their zone, it's a commercial zone, and they're there because of the planning board's insistence on how they were to be built, and I remember that well, and that's why I mentioned it. But that's no fault of the applicant, I approve the application.
Clem was asking.
I think overall this is going to be a considerable improvement in the neighborhood, and I very much like the idea of an additional casual dining facility in Morgate. We have plenty of fine dining, but lacking in casuals. I vote yes.
Mike Chris Haldy?
I'm in agreement with Clem, I'd vote yes.
Dan Humphries?
I vote yes, I think it's a very well-thought-out project.
Rich Patterson?
Contrary to one of the comments, this wasn't always a highly successful business. When Chris took it over, it was run into the ground and it was a failing business. And this man has, single-handedly turned that corner around. He's been innovative since the day he got in there, we were competitors and friends working there, and he's done nothing but try to help this city and everyone around him. There is no detrimental effects to anyone in this case, it's a great improvement to a Morgate icon, and I vote yes.
Yes is seven, yes is zero.
We're going to take a five-minute break, please.
I'm Mr. Greg.
I didn't hear it, but I was right.
I said two, I said D and C.
Greg. It's Greg.
I said two, yes, we came up.
We're going to bring the meeting back to order, please.
Rich, Adio just decided he's going to go. I approve.
You're opening up the prior matter, we forgot to get one member to vote. Mr. Palmasano, how do you vote?
I vote four. I vote four.
For everyone else's reasons?
All right, so that's seven-zero.
Seven-zero officially.
Do we need any of it?
You know, I can read my review.
Okay, the next case, Bill and Lori Murgat, 306 North Vendum Avenue. Please excuse me if I didn't pronounce that right. Block 523, Lot 15, in the S-25 district, the Grand C variance for side yard setback regarding addition. Taxes are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. I think Mr. Palmasano needs to recuse himself. Are you within 200 feet?
Vendum Avenue, yes.
You have to leave the building.
Only three can be...
Roger Ru...
Roger Rubin. I do. The subject property is a one-story, single-family home with three bedrooms and a den, front porch and frame shed in the rear yard, left corner. The home was substantially damaged by Hurricane Sandy, and as a result is presently being elevated to the newly required elevation. As part of the renovation and elevation, the applicants wish to make the modest house more livable by enlarging an existing bedroom to include a sitting room section and much-needed additional closet space. Per the Peter Weiss architect plans submitted, this involves filling out a niche in the house in the right rear corner and thereby squaring off the house. Variance is required of combined side setbacks, 17.6 feet required versus 13.1 feet. And building coverage, 36% permitted. It is 37% now, it would be 40% if approved. Comments? Regarding the combined setbacks, note that the right-side setback complies at 5.1 feet, and the addition is set in from the rest of the right wall by two feet. As a consequence, there would appear to be no issue created regarding open space, light, air, or view obstruction. Two, the addition more than meets the minimum required distance between principal buildings. Three, regarding coverage, the fairly minor overage is mitigated by the low elevation of this one-story, which even as elevated, tops off at a modest 16 feet, 7 inches above the elevated first floor, and only about 23 feet above grade. Permitted height would be 28 feet above the first floor and 35 feet above grade. The applicants, who have suffered significantly from Sandy, are asking not for a second or third floor, but merely a slightly larger bedroom in the corner. No conditions are suggested at this time.
You're welcome.
One homeowner, Joe's back, one or two homeowners have returned. It is a sad state of affairs, but I can tell ya, Bill and Lori were out there the day that storm ended, digging their house out. And I know, 'cause I was there and I could see him from my window, he was there in his Tyvek suit, going crazy. As a result, you see that his house is now up, ready to be set, and he's taking the opportunity now, these guys are, to just expand one bedroom in the back corner, which nobody's ever gonna see. The right-side yard setback meets ordinance requirements, the rear yard setback meets ordinance requirements. We end up here because the existing condition doesn't meet combined side yards, because the opposite side's only eight feet. While we meet both side yards, we don't have the combined total. And the coverage goes up, by filling in that corner, coverage goes up by about 3% to 40%. It's a 37 now. Again, it's a shame we have to be here, this truly has no impact on anyone. I know they've discussed it with their neighbors, everybody in the neighborhood's been discussing everything with everybody ever since the storm occurred, and I think everybody is strongly in support of what Bill and Lori are doing. Peter is here, he can add to what I've said, but I don't think it's necessary, the plan is very self-explanatory.
Do you have anything else, Chris? Board have any questions? So anyone from the public who would like to speak? Hearing no one, I close the public portion. Any other comments from the board? Would someone like to make a motion? What's that motion?
Motion's for C variance approval, for combined side yard and for building coverage.
No conditions.
No conditions.
Michael Richmond.
I see no negative impact on the surrounding property, so I'm gonna vote in favor.
Adios, Santori.
I approve the application, good luck to the people, I'm sorry they were hit by the hurricane.
I approve the application and applaud the Murgats. I also vote in favor, I agree with Chris, that street was really hit hard, I think this is gonna make a major improvement to the neighborhood.
I approve it, the impact is minimal.
Mike Chris Haldy.
I see no impact with it, I approve the application.
I approve for all four mentioned reasons. Next case, Venture Capital, 208 and 210 North Madison Avenue, block 430, lots 508 and 510, in the WSDMF district, to grant major site plan and possible variances. Taxes are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin.
Roger Rubin. Yes, I do. The applicant wishes to demolish the existing structures on this lot, which combined is 100 feet by 125 feet deep and 12,500 square feet, and to build there on a five-unit condominium complex as portrayed in the submitted Don Zachar architect plan. Each unit would be two stories high over parking, and each would have four bedrooms, and there are a total of 17 parking spaces, whereas only 15 are required. One of the spaces is handicap accessible. The project has storage units at grade and a closed trash recycle area, and an elevator available to one of the rear units. Total height falls within the current zoning and FEMA parameters, and all other zoning requirements appear to be complied with. The action required a site plan for a five-unit residential complex over parking. Comments? If approved, it should be conditioned on submission of eight sets of revised plans satisfying all non-wavable city engineer requirements per the attached letter of March 13th from Remington and Vernon. Second, lot consolidation is to be completed and written evidence thereof given to the board administrator prior to plan execution. Three, approved plans are subject to building code and FEMA requirement as administered by the construction official. Board approval does not waive any such regulations. Four, the board should via site inspection and review of the plans, consider the site plan aspects of the development, including access, parking, pedestrian, and automobile safety, and convenience, trash storage location, site lighting, landscape placement, and sizes and species, and any other site plan matters. Five, as stated, there appear to be no variances attached to this application. Six, it should be noted that the plan has lower building coverage and higher landscape area than required, as well as larger side setbacks. Other than as stated above, no additional conditions are proposed at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin.
You're welcome.
I represent Venture Capital of Madison LLC, with respect to this application, the planning board is seeking site plan approval for a five-unit residential building at 208-210 North Madison Avenue, identified on the tax map, is Lot 508 and 510 and Block 430. It's in the multifamily zone, where the multifamily product is a permitted use. Madison Avenue is right across the side of Memories. There are two 50-foot lots there, which will be consolidated into 100 by 125. In the MF zone, you need one unit for 2,200 square feet. This lot would permit 5.65 units, so the five units proposed are permitted. Everything about the building meets ordinance requirements in terms of its height, setbacks, coverage, parking, its seat exceeds ordinance requirements, front yard landscaping exceeds ordinance requirements, lot landscaping meets ordinance requirements, everything else falls within the parameters for site plan approval. While I'll have Don Zachar do, Don is the architect, prepare the plans, I will have Don kind of walk you around the building, tell you how the building functions, where the parking is, where access to the units are, and then of course, if you have any questions, they can be addressed in terms of how the site works.
Donald Zachar. I do.
Don, you're a licensed professional architect?
Correct.
And you prepared the site plan and the elevations that have been submitted to the board for their consideration?
Yes.
Would you kindly explain the project to the board? When I say the project, show them the building, show them how the building's gonna work, how the units are accessed, where the parking is, etc.
Sure. Okay. Drawing SP2 on the easel is a supply plan, shows the building outline, the walkways, and the grass areas, landscape areas. Probably a better exhibit to explain how the building works would be the next exhibit, which is a ground floor plan. The access and egress, egress and exit to the parking area is off Madison Avenue in the center, a two-way drive with parking on each side. There are 17 parking spaces, although 15 are required. One of the parking spaces is a barrier-free or handicap parking space. On the ground level, there are two masonry fire towers, stair towers, and a masonry elevator. There's also a machine room and a storage area. The ground floor also accommodates 10 storage cubicles. Even though there's five units proposed, there are 10 cubicles proposed, so essentially somebody can get two units, two storage units. The rear of the parcel overlooks the Lamberty parking lot. The entire lot will be enclosed by a vinyl fence, which will shield any kind of headlights that could disturb a neighbor. Essentially, there are two levels above the parking. The entire parking area is a steel structure, fireproofed, and above it are two stories of the five units. The first habitable floor... The first habitable floor is accessed by either one of these two stair towers or the elevator. Once, on this level, there's a plaza, which is open to the sky. From this level, one could access any of the units, any of the five units. The five units are essentially four-bedroom units, two-and-a-half bathroom units, two stories. First floor of the units, which is this level, is essentially living, dining, kitchen, utility, and powder room. One of the units will be fitted for a full bath, so it can be barrier-free ADA accessible. The next level... Is there feedback in this mic?
No, you're okay.
This better?
Yeah, it's a general feedback.
Alright, the next level is the second, the third level, or the second floor of the units, which is where the bedrooms are, the four bedrooms. Both on the floor below, and this floor, there are decks both front and back. The front overlooking Madison Avenue, and the back overlooking Lamberty's parking lot. There are three units across Madison Avenue, two units across the back overlooking the Lamberty parking lot. The stair towers and the elevator only go to the second level, the first habitable floor, so that once you access your unit, you can then internally go to your second floor. Alright, the next exhibit indicates the exterior elevations, essentially, it's a building that is sided with vinyl siding, simulated cedar shingles, double long windows, asphalt shingle roof. The lower level being a fireproofed steel construction will have steel wrapped with stucco and a fire-rated gypsum behind it to achieve the fire rating. The plaza floor would have a two-hour separation from the parking below to the first habitable floor, the plaza level that accesses all the units. The floor elevation, the first habitable floor is in excess of elevation 15, and our height is 28 feet above elevation 14, which is a theoretical line in space, but we've maxed out the height to get that floor, the building is high, away from any potential disastrous storms. The other two side elevations carry the same theme through, which is more of the same, vinyl siding, double long windows, asphalt shingle roofing. Obviously, the stair tower and the elevator tower don't go to the third floor, as high as the rest of the building, only have to go to the second level, the first habitable floor, to be able to access the units. That's correct, all the access is from the plaza to the entries into each unit.
Don, all setbacks meet ordinance requirements, is this all correct?
They meet the setback requirements, and they most of the lot...
All setbacks meet ordinance requirements?
All the setbacks meet the ordinance requirements. The only, the minimum setback is 10 feet, and that occurs here at the trash enclosed area, and at the mechanical room. All the other setbacks are in excess of that, are approximately 14 feet, left side or right side. The coverage meets the ordinance requirements. Landscape meets the requirement or exceeds the requirement. It does, yes. It does. You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the board? Microphone.
Question for Roger. For building code purposes, the lower level here does not count as a story. DCA has come up with that after the flood. But by our zoning ordinance, is it a story?
Now, our ordinance specifies that you could have two stories over parking, and we've always interpreted that to be, the first level over parking is the first floor, the second level over parking is the second floor.
Therefore, his decks at the top level are not third-floor decks?
They are second-floor decks, yeah.
Right, the three uses was parking, storage, and access, which is the three things that he's doing. Any further questions, I mean? I'd like to open it for the public, if anyone here from the public would like to speak, please come forward and be sworn in.
Debbie Phillips. 206 North Madison.
I just have questions, 'cause I live next door, and my house is very low. I just don't want the cars right next to my house, it'll be, I have windows on that side, and I'm concerned where the trash is and all, since I am below, and it'll all be right at my level.
If you look at it from the street, you're on the left side.
Looking from the street, I am on the left side, yes.
Isn't there a fence going up?
We were, in designing the structure, we were very sensitive about the impact of headlight, the impact of headlights, we were sensitive about the impact of headlights, so we provided a six-foot-high vinyl fence on the right side and left side. Well, there's a limit to the height of a fence that is permissible under the Margate ordinance, so we...
It'll block all my windows, except for bathrooms.
Well, the question isn't blocking the windows, the question is, you're blocking the light with a permissible fence, is that your answer?
That's my answer, yes.
Okay.
Wait a minute, did you say six foot? I thought it was five.
Five feet.
It's five feet.
Five feet.
Ms. Phillips, it's only five feet, not six feet.
Yeah, 'cause I measured it, it's about five foot.
You measured what?
My windowself.
Oh. Okay. So five feet protects you without blocking too much light?
I mean, I just measured it tonight, 'cause I didn't know what this looked like at all.
Did you see the trash area that he showed you? Would you show her the trash area?
Would you show her the trash area, please?
Roger, I can give you a video. Landscape, trees, I've got some sun trees. I haven't got the button.
How far back are you? Because I should have said from the rock on the treasure.
Excuse me, you, you have to talk into the microphone, both of you.
Trash area, is that your question? Or about the trash area?
Yes, I mean, where does the building start back? How far back?
Just about twelve feet, a little less than twelve feet.
Right.
The curve line is here. There's about ten feet from the curve to the property line.
Will there be a barrier around the trash area?
From the curve, it's about twenty...
Six foot high. That's allowed.
Right.
I do know where...
Sorry. The building starts from the property line back eleven feet, eight inches.
Okay.
Which was her question. Anyone that know how far back the trash area is? Is the trash area enclosed? It is. Okay.
All right, my also concern is, on the, on my property, I see orange markings. I guess it's the property line. I have a ramp coming back from my rear house.
Mm-hmm.
Down the side, it was handicap accessible, and I have stones between the two houses. It looks where the orange marking is, is only about, give me about two feet, three feet, from where my ramp comes down to where the property line is.
Jim, could you inspect that or whatever for her? He will inspect that and determine what's...
Yeah, I'm just concerned that...
Yeah, I can't, I can't comment on, you know, where your ramp is, where your stones are.
That's okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Public portion is closed. Any comments from the board or questions? Would you...
Motion for site plan approval.
Someone make a motion for site plan approval?
I'll second it.
The conditions being, the conditions being, eight sets of revised plans satisfying non-wavable city engineering requirements, and lot consolidation prior to plan execution. There's no variances being sought. I thought the next-door neighbor was going to have a concern about her view of the bay, which this property may block or may not, I don't know, but the parking, I think, was the concern was very well answered by the applicant, and I go by Roger's comments, he made some interesting comments, I vote to approve the application.
Since this is the lowest part of town, that, that part of town floods like you wouldn't imagine. I commend the builder for tearing down two dilapidated properties that have been disarrayed for a number of years, and I think you would agree with me that those properties are in very bad condition, and I approve this application.
I also vote in favor, the trend of the neighborhood, the developmental trend, is really picked up again in this project, and it really conforms and is for the betterment of the area.
Yeah, there are, there are no variances, and this certainly replaces a real eyesore on that street, so I vote yes. What's there, what they're taking down and getting rid of is, I think, a blessing. I think it's a good improvement. I also vote yes. I also vote yes. It's a good addition to the neighborhood. Like they said, the dilapidated structures that are there are terrible. It's a good project.
I also vote yes for the aforementioned reasons.
It passes.
Thank you all very much, have a nice evening.
Next case, Hal Augustine, 8 North Pembroke Avenue, block 217, lot...
Chris, will you please sign these?
Block 217, lot 14, in the S-40 district, to grant a C variance for distance from garage to adjacent principal structure. Taxes are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin?
The subject property is a two-and-a-half-story house, which is presently under construction. When the previous house was recently demolished to make way for this house, the existing garage was retained with the hope of obtaining a variance for distance to the house next door. As a basic principle, when a house is demolished, all accessory structures are demolished as well, and the property is treated as completely vacant land, subject to all zoning restrictions, principal as well as accessory. Consequently, a variance is needed to retain a garage which, which does not meet every restriction of zoning for new houses. The variance required, the only variance is for distance between a garage wall and the wall of a principal building on an adjacent lot, which must be five feet wall-to-wall, but which is three feet nine inches in this instance. Comments? Site visits will indicate to board members if there are detrimental impacts or not to the left neighbor, such as reduction of light and airflow or view obstruction. Two, the board may consider that the new house could have been slightly reduced or cut out in the corner to allow the full garage distance to the neighbor. It may also balance this consideration with the fact that the affected neighbor has lived with a reduced distance for a long time. Also, the left neighbor's wall closest to the garage is a one-story portion with one small window, possibly a laundry or utility room. Three, the neighbor's testimony, if presented, would be helpful to the board. Four, in all other respects, such as area, height, et cetera, the garage meets zoning requirements. Five, there is no issue with regard to the rear house, this garage backs up to another garage.
Thank you. My name is John Obolinas, architect, and I, yes?
I will.
I represent Hal and Norma Augustine, and our project is the garage. It's an existing masonry garage, again, tight to the corner, about three inches away from the neighbor, and about two feet or so away from the backyard. We intend to give it a little bit of facelift by adding a new roof. The existing roof is flat, and we propose a, a gable roof that has the gable side facing the neighbor, and which would allow us to drain the roof into our property at the front and the back. The distance, of course, to the neighbor is three feet nine inches. We have, our neighbor was supposed to be here tonight. It's an important thing that's part of this package, was that their neighbor to the left was going to come here tonight in favor of the project for two important reasons, but for medical reasons, they couldn't come. So I want to ask the board, we have a letter, I know it's not acceptable, but there's an affidavit that states why they like the garage where it is, and I don't know if you want the owner to come up and present the letter, or I can give you an idea of what the letter says, I ask you the...
You can just summarize it, John.
Basically, the most important part...
Okay, swear the homeowner in.
It's neighbor to neighbor, so that's the best one. Yeah, mark it. Uh, Hal Augustine. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Joanne Marlene Goldenberger, 6th North Pembroke, they're my left-hand neighbor that are adjacent to this, intended to be here, but Marlene was admitted to intensive care unit on Tuesday night. In the letter, I'll just point to two things in the interest of time. One is that they said they had every intention of attending today, however, Marlene was rushed to virtual hospital. And item number five, if I can leave this with you, is, "The presence of the Augustine garage provides our backyard with welcome privacy and shade that we truly enjoy." And this is notarized, if I can, would anybody like to see it? Thank you very much for that opportunity. Thank you. Of course, on the other side of the garage, which again has been there for fifty-six years, facing their backyard, is an ivy-covered wall, it prevents, it allows a nice sort of green borderline to the backyard. It's a small urban backyard, but between the ivy-colored, or ivy-covered wall on the inside, and the neighbor's desire to keep that privacy, otherwise, we'd have to set that garage wall back another five or six feet, which would open up an alleyway to that backyard, and defeats that nice private wall that the, the neighbor really grew to like over the years. So basically, that's our application. If we can be allowed to keep the garage as-is, we're going to, again, add the new roof. Everything conforms, the roof slope, the roof height, drainage to the property, all conforms, so we hope that we'll be allowed to do that. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
One question for Roger.
Mike?
Roger, I have one question. When, in our, on the, our zoning, it says that we have to be five feet from adjacent. That's for the neighbor, not to the existing house.
It's five feet from a garage wall to the, to the nearest wall of a principal building on an adjacent lot.
On the adjacent lot?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah, so we're good.
Is anyone here from the public would like to speak? Hearing none, I close the public portion. Any further questions from the board? Yes.
The three feet in between the house and the garage is not a zoning rule, it's a fire rule.
As a custom, we have attempted to have people make the garages be three feet away from their own principal house, but that's not a hard and fast rule. This is a couple inches under three full feet, but it's still what, thirty, thirty and a half inches? So that, that's not a zoning violation.
Okay. Very good.
Do I hear a motion to approve the application?
I'll second.
The neighbors don't have a problem with it, so I can go to vote yes.
Adie O'Sanford?
It's interesting to get that note from the neighbors, that although they're not here to testify, and it's not admissible, I admit it, I admit, admit it, I vote to approve the application.
Jeff Galatina?
I vote in favor of the application.
Tom Pollins?
I also vote in favor of the application.
Clem Woslowski?
The situation has existed for a long, long time, without a problem. I vote yes.
Mike Chrisold?
Like Clem said, it's been there a long time with this, the neighbors like it. I also approve.
If I were the neighbor, when I walked back into that yard, if I were a neighbor, I, I also thought that that made a nice barrier and a nice private place for them, and it actually benefits the neighbor to keep it there. So here's a case, there's no detriment, it's actually a benefit to the neighbor in fact, and so I approve.
Craig Pamasana?
There appears to be no problem. I vote yes.
It passes. Eight to...
Thank you.
John, would you please sign?
Next case is Richard and Robin Goldberg, 17 North Nassau Avenue, block 214, lot three, in the S-40 district, to grant a C variance for left-side setback, combined-side setbacks, possibly others. Taxes are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin?
Roger Rubin? I do. The subject property is a single-family house on a lot of fifty-two by eighty feet. It has two bedrooms on the first floor, and a front porch and rear yard deck. The first floor meets the required flood elevation, as does the proposed addition, which is a one-story addition into the rear yard next to the existing deck for a larger master bedroom suite and the addition of a bathroom.
Excuse me, Roger. The, the architect is working on my house right now, so I have to recuse myself.
The variance is required, our left-side setback, eight feet is required versus two feet seven inches to the wall of the one-story addition, lining it up with the left wall of the existing house, and combined-side setbacks, nineteen point twenty-four feet required versus fourteen feet as proposed. Comments? This is a low-profile house with low building coverage at thirty-one percent with the addition versus thirty-four point two percent permitted. Also, total elevation of the house is fourteen feet nine inches from first floor to its roof peak, and only eighteen feet six inches from the ground to the roof peak. In fact, this is one of the lowest-profile houses on the block, and again, there is no request for a second-floor addition. Number two, in addition to relatively low building coverage, landscaping area is higher than the required thirty-five percent at fifty-four percent with the addition. Three, the left-side setback variance is the key in this case. As such, site visits will determine if the board feels there are impacts or not on that neighbor. Site visit will indicate the left neighbor's rear yard and patio are protected by distance and an intervening garage. Also, there is one window of the left neighbor which might be considered. No conditions are suggested at this time.
Mr. Swift, please. James, administrator of the board, my name is James Swift.
Jim, get the mic, please.
My name is James Swift, 1335 Tilton Road, Northfield, New Jersey. I'm here tonight on behalf of Dr. and Mrs. Goldberg, who are here in a front row. In addition, I have Mr. Lou Capone, who is here from Harry Harper's architect office. Mr. Harper couldn't make it tonight for a medical reason, but Mr. Capone is the person who prepared these plans and is prepared to briefly address the board and explain what we want to do. In essence, this is a very, very simple project. We're asking for a minor side yard setback to permit the Goldbergs to extend, there's a first-floor room that's not big enough for a bedroom presently. We're asking for this variance so they can extend this room. Do I take this thing with me? Basically, what they want to do is extend the already pre-existing, non-conforming side yard setback, extend it a little bit further, which will permit them to extend this room on the first floor, make it a master bedroom, along with a bathroom. He would submit to the board that one of the considerations for a lack of impact on the neighbor is the fact that on the left side of this property, 17 North Nassau, it basically looks out into the neighbor's driveway, so there is a buffer room in between the Goldberg property and the neighbors. And for the record, and if, if the board wants to question Mike's clients, they did in fact go and speak with the neighbors about what they wanted to do. Obviously, we don't see the neighbors here, but the neighbors consented, and frankly, gave them their blessing with the project, and we're very happy for them. If I may, can I bring Mr. Capone up to briefly address the technical aspects of the project? And given the hour, I'm going to be very considerate of your time, and frankly, I'm going to look to the board for your guidance if you have any questions. I'm not going to take up more time than we need. Mr. Capone, please.
Louis Jacobon? I do.
Basically, describe to the board the minor variance. There's actually two variances. One is the, is the left setback.
We're asking for the two setbacks combined on the left side. One of the considerations that was brought up is, well, we could not be here tonight, we could have pushed this house over, and obviously centered this addition to the back, but one of the considerations we did is, if anybody had the chance to go look at their house, you'll see the incredible amount of landscaping that our customers have done, and not in the front, but also in the back. They have a beautiful streetscaping, stonescaping in the back, and if they pushed this any further over, they wouldn't be able to enjoy their backyard. So they thought they would come forward and, and ask for relief to the board, obviously, to put this addition on their side. Obviously, based on the design, it also shows you that we're taking a bedroom for a bedroom and creating a bathroom in the existing old space, and creating a master suite in that space. One of the good things too is, which is, they do conform to the nineteen eighty-eight datum, so we don't have to worry about a height situation arising in the house, so we feel this is very brief and, and very just. this is very brief and, and very just.
Can I ask Mr. Capone a couple questions?
Yes.
In your professional opinion, would you render an opinion before the board that this...
Yes.
Is this application that we're making, is it similar with...
Yes, as, as you know, this is definitely a small house in, in the neighborhood compared to everyone else. There's no intent at this point to move forward going to a second floor, it's a very modest addition. Um, their house represents well as curb appeal. I mean, their landscaping is impeccable, it's definitely a situation where they're keeping up with the street and, and try to maintain the value also.
And is it your opinion that 21...
That's correct.
And do you see any detriment to the public good?
None.
This application, would it be your, finally, your professional opinion? Any possible detriment that frankly I don't see, but in any event, would of this project outweigh any bad?
Yes.
I don't have any further questions of the board, I know it's late, I ask for your guidance as to what you want to ask us.
Anybody from the board have any questions?
I have a question for Roger, on the, the shower, the shower setback, does that have a problem?
You know, I forget, where's the shower?
The shower was moved back on 1755.
We have your setback.
Yeah, it's, it's, that's fine. Yep.
I do have Dr. and Mrs. Goldberg here, who can answer questions if the board wants to.
No, no, that's okay. Anybody else from the board? Anyone from the public have any questions? Okay, public portion is closed.
Okay, motion?
Uh, can somebody make a motion? Approve the application?
I'll second.
No conditions are required.
No conditions?
No. No conditions. It's for, uh, left-side yard setback and combined-side yard setback are the variances, so there's a motion and a second, so if we have a roll.
Adia Santori?
I vote to approve the application, and I just want the board to make a note that this shower is in the middle of the property, and it's on the addition and not in the corner on two property lines like we saw last month. I approve.
Testing. I approve the application. I commend people who are meeting our new advisory-based evaluation maps, which are in effect, effective January 24th, 2013. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Collins?
I vote in favor also. The addition is very de minimis to the property while maintains the integrity of the property. Um, the house is well-maintained, beautiful gardens, landscaping. I applaud you for keeping your house so nice.
Thank you.
Clem Waslaski?
Uh, the side yard continues the line of the existing house, and the neighbors don't appear to have a problem with it, I vote yes.
Mike Chris Wolding?
I agree, without the neighbors having any problem, I say I vote to approve.
Thank you.
Craig Pamasana?
I approve the addition. A welcome addition to the bedroom, I'm sure. Make it nice.
Thank you.
I don't see any detriment to the neighborhood or the neighbors, so I do approve it.
Thank you very much.
It passes seven to zero.
Thank you. I could make this application longer if the board would make that request, but...
Jim, will you please sign?
We're done.
We'll push it.
We'll reopen the matter.
I make the motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Yes, please. I know it's running late, I appreciate you guys taking the time.
This is early.
Just for you, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Capone. Jim, we'll deal with your last, uh, 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 application.